...house than just Hollyhocks.
This is made of cast concrete blocks. It's an abstract design. Frank Lloyd Wright looked to nature for all his inspiration. You have water, you have fire, you have earth in the concrete and you have light.
I really love architecture, so I wanted to kind of figure out like what was so special about it and like why there was like so much hype around it.
I'm a really big fan of Frank Lloyd Wright. I just really like his style because it's so simple and natural and really evokes the elements of the earth and nature.
I want you to take a look at the back of this chair.
It's a hollyhock.
It is.
And so, a Hollywood landmark has now been upgraded to one of the world's most important cultural and historic sites.
For more information and to schedule a tour, visit culturela.org and click on Hollyhock House UNESCO designation. L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs manages the site. Councilmember Gil Sadio helps support a new Latino history book in L.A.'s libraries. A boost for MetroLink ridership and local high school students get free Wi-Fi, thanks in part to L.A. Council President Herb Wesson. All this in City View. L.A. City Councilmember Gil Sadio and the L.A. Public Library are working together to distribute a new book called "Power Shift: How Latinos in California Transformed Politics in America to Library Branches Throughout the City." The book details the legacy and accomplishments of 10 East L.A. Latino political leaders. MetroLink has hit a major milestone, hitting nearly 12 million boardings last year. The new record is an increase of 247,000 boardings from the prior year and eclipses the record set in 2008 and 2009 fiscal year. L.A. City Council President Herb Wesson has announced the launch of a citywide program to give free Wi-Fi hotspots to low-income high school students so they can do schoolwork. Council President Wesson is working with One Million Project Foundation and Los Angeles Unified School District on this project. Want to post something different on Instagram? Well, a new pop-up gallery is the first in the world dedicated to exotic fruit. And you can even sample some of these healthy foods while you're there. Gil Reyes shows us.
Get your camera ready. In the world of photo-friendly pop-up galleries, a new one called World of Fruit brings something new to the table.
As far as I know, it's the first and only fruit-themed immersive experience in the world. And we just opened a couple months ago. We're directly across from the legendary Pink's Hot Dogs. So we're a great location here, a lot of summertime fun here, get some great photos, taste some yummy treats, get a nice popsicle. It's just a good time here.
Founder Andrew Zou takes us on a tour.
So Andrew, this room is all banana slices, but they aren't your typical banana slices.
No, they're not. So, you know, our whole thing is food you've never seen or tasted before. You know, we don't want to do a yellow, traditional yellow banana. A lot of people have called these cow bananas, a bunch of different names. We just want to make things unique.
Here's a nice group photo taken from this room. Moving on.
A little bit more of a tranquil experience in this room compared to the others.
Right, definitely. So you can see this is our Holy Vines Room. We have fog going, we have, you know, birds chirping with tropical rainforest sounds. We see a beam of light coming down and it kind of illuminates this Garden of Eden almost with these enlarged berries.
World of Fruit also hosts private parties as well as film shoots. Celebrate with friends in the Infinity Grape Room or in the Pineapple Disco Derby. This space even has watermelon disco balls to get you in the party mood. Now on to the next room.
Andrew, this is called the Watermelon Room?
Right, this is one of our fan favorites, actually, just because there's so many photo ops. You know, two swings, you have a seesaw, and you got a wonderful waterfruit popsicle that you can only get here.
Thanks, Jordy. How many flavors do we have?
We actually have watermelon here, and then the bottom is actually a lemonade flavor.
Alright.
And everything's natural, gluten-free, it's only 60 calories as well, so. Everything in this room you can actually play with, so all the swings work as well. It really brings up the inner child in people. So even, we've had some people, you know, like 70, 75 years old come onto the seesaw and just have a great time. This, to me, is the most exciting part of our experience. You know, a lot of Instagram museums out there, you can get the photos, but none of them have this. Every guest that comes in here gets a sample of each of all, each of these fruits. So we'll start here with the jackfruit. This is one of our fan favorites. It's a very sweet fruit, very tart. We have guava here, passion fruit, yellow dragon fruit. We have baby pineapples here, rambutan, as well as star fruit. You're not going to find these in your, in your vans, you're not going to find these at Ralph's, in your local grocery stores.
Come get a taste and snap some photos at World of Fruit at 716 North La Brea. For ticket info, log on to worldoffruit.co.
A portion of the proceeds benefits the L.A. Food Bank. The gallery runs through the end of October. It's an app that helps kids discover and explore the world around them. The goal is to get more kids outside playing and learning.
We are really happy to have all of you guys here today at L.A. State Historic Park for our official launch of Agents of Discovery.
Agents of Discovery is like Pokemon Go, but for education.
I need two objects with masks. I mean, yes, yeah, masks.
It's all about getting out and exploring. It's, you know, linking location to learning.
Read this challenge, and this is one of our missions.
Agents of Discovery allows students to learn more about parks.
I get to learn something, and I love nature, so it's even better.
The city of L.A. was one of the very first customers of Agents of Discovery, and they now have nine parks that are participating across the city. And there is about, in total, about 300 locations in the country.
So I have learned that there used to be a train station here.
And then how did they clean the area afterwards? By planting corn to suck the toxins out of the ground. Just walking through here and doing the app, I think it expands essentially our knowledge of the area.
Learning something new, it can open up doors for you to have better perspectives of other places and other things and other people.
This is what the world needs. We don't need more entertainment. We need more families out happy together exploring.
Who doesn't love elephants? Well, they were the hot topic recently during World Elephant Day at the L.A. Zoo. It was all part of an effort to increase awareness of the challenges that Asian elephants face and protect them from extinction.
This weekend, the L.A. Zoo is celebrating World Elephant Day with a lot of activities focused on Asian elephants. August is Asian Elephant Appreciation Month, and we're trying to shine a light on Asian elephants because they're highly endangered. Some of the, some of the challenges facing Asian elephants are illegal ivory trade, habitat destruction, and human-elephant conflict. As people take up more and more space, elephants have less space to live in, and that's causing a lot of challenges for them.
I think it's very informational, very educational, and eye-opening because you see how they're trying to mimic their, their natural environment here and we're killing it out there, so it kind of sucks.
We have a campaign called Tons of Love. We're trying to get 40,000 social media posts that are tagged with the hashtag #tonsoflove to let people know there are only 40,000 left.
We, as a people, we should do something to save, you know, not only elephants, all the endangered, you know, animals.
Come down and tour our barns where you can learn more about our elephants and how we take care of them, what they eat, and participate in some fun activities that we've got for the kids. There's all kinds of fun stuff to do.
Each summer, the Department of Recreation and Parks offers a summer concert series in Pershing Square. Anita Bennett reports. The events are a big hit with people who just happen to be downtown. The sounds of summer and of Rick Springfield filled Pershing Square at a free summer concert.
Fun! You know our kind of music, the food, the day, just getting out of the office, perfect.
As the crowd took in the music, South Bay cover band Radio Rebels belted out a string of 1980s hits.
This is our third year playing Pershing Square, so we were really excited to be asked back. The energy is so fun. I mean, we get a, an eclectic crowd here, people that work downtown L.A., people just maybe visiting here in the summer, tourists.
Those tourists and others in the crowd settled in for an afternoon of fun.
We're from Fort Lauderdale, Florida. So how'd you hear about this?
We were just walking by and we heard the music, and I pulled my daughter in because I love this music. This is music from my good old days.
It is lunchtime, so for anyone looking to grab something to eat or drink, they got that covered too at the Pershing Square Farmer's Market. I'm having a tropical juicy juice. That's good.
The Summer Concert Series is presented by the Department of Recreation and Parks, and judging by the reactions, well, today's performance hit just the right notes. The Pershing Square lunchtime concerts are held each Wednesday afternoon throughout the month of August. Enjoy Sunday Market that's 100% vegan, come out for a Latina Fest that's all about empowerment, and book lovers explore the writings of great authors, poets, and artists at a Village Book Fair. All this and things to do. Vegan Sunday NoHo is the South Valley's free 100% vegan market, featuring local food, apparel, and lifestyle vendors. At Vegan Sunday, you'll find an army of vendors serving up tacos, drinks, burgers, and more alongside cosmetics, candles, and then some. Join your NoHo neighbors for Vegan Sunday weekly from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at 5300 Bachman Avenue. For more details, visit vegansundayevents.com. The Lamont Park Village Book Fair returns for its 13th edition. Book lovers, families, and fans of all ages are invited to join in on this unrivaled literary event. Come celebrate the writings of great authors, poets, and artists during this day-long festival. The 13th Annual Lamont Park Village Book Fair drops on Saturday, August 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Get more details at lamontparkbookfair.com. Experience an empowerment celebration. Latina Fest 2019 is an outdoor festival which brings together thousands of women eager to engage and network. You can shop, enjoy some wellness pampering, or sip wine at the Cocktail Garden. Then listen as inspirational talk Latina speakers share how to find the most powerful you. Latina Fest 2019: Mind, Body, and Soul makes its way to La Plaza de Cultura y Artes on Sunday, August 25th, beginning at noon. For more information, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app, available from the App Store or on Google Play. MyLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even Senior Citizen Center. Request graffiti removal. You can even pay your DWP bill. Keep up with what's going on at City Hall. And even report illegal dumping. MyLA311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hands.
Get your camera ready. Good morning, good morning. If everyone could please take a seat. If everyone could please take a seat. Want to welcome you to this, to City Hall. To this council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Again, today is Tuesday, August 20th. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Blumenfield Bonin Buscaino. Sadio Harris-Dossen, Weezer Coretts, Kakkorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Rue moves, Smith seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves, Blumenfield seconds, next.
Mr. President, today's Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could get everyone to please rise for our salute of our flag, be led today by Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everybody could please place their hand over their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Madam Clerk, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue. Item 22 to September 18, 2019, sir.
So ordered.
Items 1 through 23 are items noticed for a public hearing. Motions are required for items 18 and 23, and they should be held on the desk. Furthermore, there are cards on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16...
All items, Madam Clerk?
Pretty much, sir, pretty much.
Save you a little bit of wind. Save you a little bit of wind there, so all items.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, I wasn't sure which item was being held off calendar. Was it 22?
22 is continued to September 18.
I'd ask that number 20 be continued to the 30th.
22, the 30th?
Okay, so ordered. Continue.
22. Continue, okay.
Continue.
Item number 24 is the item for which public hearing has been held, sir.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you, continue.
Items 25 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items as well?
Yes, there are cards on 25, 26, 28, 30 through 36, and 39, sir.
Okay, let's hold those items and we'll vote on the remaining items.
Okay, excuse me, sir. So the ones without cards would be 27, 28, 37, 38, and I misspoke. 39 does not have cards and can be voted on, as well as 40 and 41, sir.
Thank you, let's vote on those items. So if you would please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That brings us where?
That brings council to items called special presentation or general public comment, sir.
Hey, Sergeant, if I could get you to remove the rope in the center aisle. Corey Smith, are you here? Corey, please come on up. So Corey, you've held just about every item, items 2... All the way to 39, so go ahead.
Okay, so, like I said, I'm a man of my word. And I told you I didn't want to see him on here anymore, so I'm here to talk about it some more. The lighting districts on 2 through 17. I'm just gonna say this, just one snippet. 5G technology uses the same technology that's in your microwave at home. Okay, regards to 19 through 22, closures. We don't have to shut it down, but we do have to talk about how to do it safely. Number 18, alcohol, sure. 23 for tree removal, don't think you can do it. 25 and 26 in regards to cannabis regulation. I'm totally for this, I'm ready to shut some down, just give me the tools. Number 28 in regards to homeless immigrant minors. This touchy subject. We should be caring for these refugees, I do believe that, the ones that need assistance. But we also need to protect from malicious attacks on our welfare system. From other parties that may want to try to take us down. Number 30. Let's skip forward to some positivity. 34 in regards to El Pueblo museum funding. I support this. Number 35 in regards to more homeless outreach, I'm also for this. And number 39 in regards to mobile laundry services, I'm also for this. So, that's it.
Corey, what about your general public comment? You know, you get a minute for that as well. You're good? Okay, thank you. Okay, before we move on, why don't we take action on a few items? Let's vote on items 25, 26, 28, 30, 31. 25, 26, 28, 30, and 31. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Now let's vote on items 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 39. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to recognize that our new commissioner that we just voted on is here in the audience today, Ms. Thyrus Mason. We'll ask her to stand up. Let's give her a big round of applause. She'll be serving...
Congratulations.
On the commission. You, Thyrus, you got in with no discussion, so we're expecting big things from you. Council District 8, Thyrus Mason, our new commissioner.
All right, let's give her one more round of applause. Okay, let's vote, Madam Clerk, on items 14, 17, 19, and 21. In fact, 14 through 17, items 19 and 21. Got it? Let's vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
All right. Okay, Mr. Murphy, why don't you come on up? Sean, you've got items 1 through... 13. Go ahead.
Yes, item 7, more street lighting. Street lighting's good. Item 13, I am against general public comment.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
DeSoto Street, Topanga Canyon, Roscoe, in my CD3 now, they need to be repaid, they need to be... Streets need to be repaid. See a lot of cracks on Roscoe and DeSoto. Somebody could fall, and somebody could break their bones riding their bikes. I'm a bike rider, they should fix this, fix the streets.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sax? You have items 1... Through 7, and then, general public comment, Mr. Arnold Sax? Susan Roka, Rocha, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, through 7. Please come forward.
I'm only going to speak on general comments.
Okay, give her her one minute for general. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Sadio, you went to Divine Savior Catholic Church on national night out. You know that this church unjustly prosecuted me for a crime that I did not commit. I went to a jury trial and I was found not guilty. Because the whole story was made up, all lies. And to see you go to Divine Savior on the website, or somewhere on social media, is another pain in my thorn. Please, you never stood up for that. You always stood up for injustice. Please do not stand with them for what they did to me. It was cruel, immoral to put me on trial for something I didn't do. Please do not go to their church. Do not stand up with them. Do not give them any credibility. You could go to 100 other churches in the area. Please, make a statement that this is not okay, what they did to me.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. In fact, why don't I, at this point, before we continue with our public comment, if I could get Mr. Buscaino to come up here, and he has a very, very important introduction. Maybe you can do it from this chair?
In fact, why don't you join us, Mr. President? Colleagues, I'd like to introduce to you a dear friend and member of the New York State Assembly representing the 79th district, which includes South Bronx. The Assembly Member and the Honorable Michael Blake. Give him a warm welcome, his first visit to our city chambers here. I have grown to love Michael over the years through my affiliation with Democratic municipal officials and the NLC. Son of Jamaican parents, has been an advocate for social justice throughout this country. Very active with President Obama's administration. And, Michael, we welcome you, we embrace you. And you're also doing great work in the Democratic Party. He's also Vice Chair of the Democratic National Committee. And is really leading the issues that are valuable to the Democratic Party throughout this country, and of course, his home state, New York. So on behalf of the entire membership here in City Council, we, as your first visit, Mr. President, if you can help, we welcome you to City Council chambers, the Honorable Michael Blake. Let's give him another warm welcome and a round of applause. Thank you, Michael, we love you, we thank you. Mr. Sadio?
Mr. Buscaino, thank you so much. Michael Blake is one of the rising stars of our party, of course, but also a great leader just in terms of civic participation and political leadership in our nation. A rising star. I think it's noteworthy to point out that New York has embraced the driver's license for immigrant motorists, much in the same way we did, impacting close to a million immigrant motorists. And has also embraced the Dream Act, our California Dream Act. They now have their New York Dream Act. Great measures for civic engagement and integration of immigrants into the mainstream at a time when immigrants are being maligned. The fact of the matter is, on a daily basis, immigrants make this nation work, and immigrants are the future of this country, as they are, they've been the past.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Good morning, everyone. It is a joy and honor to be with you, of course, with my dear friend, Joe. Thank you for allowing me to be in your space. Thank you for allowing a Yankee fan to be here with you, I appreciate that, everybody. But we are, that's why I said, I appreciate it, you know? But we are following so much that's happening here in LA, and so much that's happening in California. We were able to have a historic session this year, in large part because of what you all have done repeatedly. And it goes without saying, New York and LA, we do so much together. So, in this environment that we're in, this is a reminder, it matters who's elected office, it matters who represents our local communities. And for me, being a son of Jamaican immigrants, I always remind people, we all are in this together. So, to my fellow colleagues in government, thank you for the opportunity to be with you, and God bless everyone today.
Thank you, Assemblymen. Thank you so much, colleagues. Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, there is a request to have item 30 to go forth with, sir, and...
Without objection.
And council has items called special, general public comment, or presentation, sir.
All right, let's bring up Ms. Ramirez. Okay, Ms. Ramirez, you have three minutes on all the cards you pulled, and then one minute of general public comment.
Three minutes, I'm sorry, three minutes, what? I'm sorry, could you repeat, three minutes for all what? Ladies and gentlemen, I am here for, against any of the protests that are against Donald Trump. Donald Trump is the greatest leader we've had, and he is and has made a wonderful economic recovery. All of you are happy because you've made a lot of money during the time of Donald Trump's economic prosperity, and you're cashing in on his credit.
Ms. Ramirez, you need to speak to the agenda items.
Well, can you tell me the agenda items?
Stick to the items, you know the routine, Antonia.
I'm sorry, can you tell me the agenda items?
You pull the cards, you know the items.
Okay, well, and maintenance, it's street maintenance, ladies and gentlemen. The maintenance on the streets, we need to remove all the wetbacks and gangbangers because they're breaking all the lights. They're destroying the streets, the lighting. Yeah, I'm talking about maintenance in the streets.
Antonia, this is your last warning, speak to the items you pulled, thank you.
Let's go to public comment, okay?
Okay, give her one minute, thank you.
Public comment. Thank you for the censorship, Buscaino, because you're the ass licker, not me. And to the guy from the Bronx, yeah, I know New York too well. And furthermore, it isn't immigrants, it's lawful immigrants. I am a lawful immigrant, not a fucking wetback. There's a difference, boy. Learn the truth between legal and illegal, and then become a real honorable, decent patriotic American, like the fucking Gil Setiyo, who's a fucking wetback. Shut up, white trash, we ain't talking to you. And furthermore, ladies and gentlemen, last night at 12:30 at La Placita, there was a nigger holding out a large blade, shining, brandishing out at me. I know that they want to kill me, I know. If anything happens to me, Buscaino, it'll be on you and every council member here. I got niggers harassing me, brandishing me, and beating me up. If anything happens to me, on La Placita, or the Music Center, Grand Park, blocks 1 or 4, bathrooms where I've already been attacked, beaten, and robbed, it will be your fault, Buscaino, and the fucking Jews, and the fucking niggers, and double ACP. The Black Lives Matter.
Okay, your time's up. Your time is up, thank you. Stop disrupting the meeting, Antonia. Okay, that's your last warning. Okay, she continues to disrupt, so please escort her out, Sergeant. Thank you very much. Goodbye. You continue to disrupt this meeting, Antonia, you've been through this before. Goodbye. Goodbye.
Mr. President, for the record, Ms. Ramirez continues to shout obscenities, and she's screaming and refuses to leave the room.
Thank you, let the record reflect that she continues to disrupt as she's making her way out of chambers. Thank you.
And she continues to scream and shout in case the recording...
We cannot continue city business because of her yelling and disrupting the meeting as she's leaving. All right, so back to regular programming. To those joining us for the first time, this is the given right, the First Amendment, as we call. So please bear with us. I've often said the First Amendment right doesn't give you a right to be an idiot, but apparently, here we are. So, thank you for your patience. Appreciate your patience here. So with that, colleagues, members, let's now... Items 1 through 13 are now before us. No cards are pulled. No speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Those are approved. I'd like to welcome Ms. Rodriguez for her presentation.
Well, on that note, Pari Luis, colleagues, good morning. It is my great honor to introduce to you today and welcome Lilith Hovan, I'm sorry, Hovanesyan, an incredible Armenian pop singer, here to our City Council chambers here in Los Angeles. If you please help me give her a round of applause. She is also joined today by her husband, who serves as her manager and lyricist, Varam Petrosian. But beside us is my incredible team member, forever member of Team Emrod, Nishan Balikyan, who will also be here to serve as translator, because Lilith speaks limited English. But she is currently on her Dream World Tour, touring over 70 international cities. She'll be performing in almost all of Europe, and will continue on the capital cities of, in Canada, Australia, Brazil, Uruguay, and Argentina. Lilith was born in Yerevan, Armenia, and from a young age, she had a passion for music and the arts, and has gone on to have a very successful career as a singer. She has been on multiple international tours, sold out concert venues, and has had millions of fans worldwide. She holds the record as one of the most viewed Armenian singers on YouTube, and her music combines traditional Armenian elements with modern international components. Her videos will also feature outfits and costumes that she made herself. Lilith has performed in various festivals representing Armenian culture, and international festivals in Shanghai, China, and Prague. And she has been selected to represent the Republic of Armenia on... Republic of Armenia on several occasions. Since 2013, Lilith has performed in 130 international cities and is renowned for her vibrant and fiery costumes used in her music videos and performances, which are all co-produced by she and her husband. In addition to her music, in 2014, Lilith launched the online platform for customers to purchase custom-designed outfits and accessories that she herself has designed. In recognition of her efforts, she has received multiple awards and honors, and in 2016, she was the recipient of the Best Female Singer of the Year, according to the Pan-Armenian Entertainment Awards, and the recipient of the Republic of Armenia's Cultural and Heritage Music Award. So, Lilith, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we want to congratulate you on an outstanding, successful world tour, and thank you for your contributions to the greater Armenian community and the music industry. And with that, colleagues, I'd like to introduce you all for the very first time, Lilith Hovanecian.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, for this great honor. I am so grateful and humbled to be recognized by the Los Angeles City Council. The people of Armenia have had to face multiple struggles to survive in their history, especially during the Armenian genocide, in which one and a half million Armenian lives was taken away. The only way of survival was to flee. America, specifically Los Angeles, is now one of the largest homes for Armenians as a result of seeking refuge. To be recognized by the leadership of the very city that accepted and took in my people is the reason that I am honored beyond what words may express. I would like to emphasize that it is not only this honor that I am so humbled by, but the relationship this great city has displayed to the Armenian community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilith. And with that, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, congratulations and much success on your continued world tour.
Thank you very much.
Is he still around? I thought I saw him earlier. Good to see you.
Nice to see you, and good morning, good morning to the council as well. I'm here just to thank the staff of Councilman Bloomingfield. We worked very hard on this project, we worked closely with the council staff, police department, community. In fact, we have a great letter of support on this project from LAPD, and we turned in a petition of more than 200 names, with 80% of the names coming from the community. So I'm here just to thank the councilman and Mr. Tobian, who's the applicant, is here as well, to also thank the councilman. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll.
Mr. President, we're holding for a written motion, sir. It's being circulated, sir.
Why don't we just hold on that? Okay, Item 23. Okay, Rob Golson, Christina Crop, Armin, and Jamie Hall, please come forward.
Good morning, councilmembers, my name is Rob Glushan, and my firm represents Armin Malconians, who is the property owner who's just trying to build about a 1,500-square-foot pad, single-family home. It is a by-right project, no variances are being requested, no deviations from code, and yet, in order to remove three protected oak trees, he followed all the right processes, went before the Board of Public Works, they approved the removal. He was required and will still need to replant 12 oak trees as replacements. The Director of Street Services issued a permit, the trees were removed in the presence of Councilmember Coretza's staff, because there were neighbors complaining about, they just don't want this project. And so, 177 days after the trees were approved for removal, you have a CEQA appeal filed.
Thank you.
So we ask that you deny the appeal.
Thank you. If I could get the next speaker.
Good morning, my name is Jamie Hall, I'm a land use and environmental attorney with Channel Law Group, and I'm here representing the appellant. There's really two questions here, whether or not this project is exempt as a Class III project from CEQA, and whether or not it's exempt as a Class 32 project from CEQA. The reason why the normal single-family home exemption doesn't work is this is in the Santa Monica Mountain Zone, and the legislature has already concluded that that is an environmental resource of critical concern. We commissioned an expert report that showed that mitigating for the loss of individual trees does not mitigate for the loss of habitat. There will be a 30% loss of habitat to a sensitive plant community after this project moves forward. Also, this is not exempt as a Class 32 project, because the project has, quote, "value as habitat for rare, threatened, or endangered species." There is something that you can do, there is meaningful relief. If you send this back for environmental review, you can require replacement of the walnut trees. He didn't talk about that. They actually are removing walnut trees that they claimed that were dead, that have recently come back to life.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Armin Malconians, the property owner. I just want to make one thing clear, the trees have been already cut on the property with the appropriate permits that were garnered through the Board of Public Works. So we got the appropriate permits, the trees have been cut, there is an appeal. As property owners, we had to indemnify the city, hire attorneys, pay a lot of money to go through this process, and the attorneys have stated that there is no merit to this appeal, and that's reflected in the staff report that was brought as forward to counsel for adoption, recommended by staff for adoption. So, I urge you to deny the appeal, let us build our family home that we're trying to build for my wife and my child, by right, and we'd like to move on from this year-long appeal process now. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Coretza.
Yes, without any great enthusiasm and pointing out that there are no trees left to be saved, I move that we deny the appeal, as the applicant was in compliance with all the required tree removal permit procedures.
All right, with that said, let's prepare to, I'll second that. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. President, the amending motion for 18 has been posted and circulated and is before council now.
Let's prepare to vote on that item, then. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna go back to general public comment for a while. Brooke Harrington, Tom Ralter, Davina Davids, Elliot, please come forward.
Members of City Council, I am here today as a concerned citizen to address your recent unanimous vote to renew Municipal Code 8502 to fine our fellow Angelinos for sleeping in their cars. Three years ago, we voted to give you $5 billion to address homelessness through Measure H and Proposition Triple H, and with that money, you've only built 330 beds for the 58,000 people in this city experiencing homelessness. It is disgustingly clear that this council cares more about property values than people, and for all the excuses about safe spaces, you've designated 500 spots for 5,000 vehicles. People are dying. Homeless deaths are up 76% in the last five years, 3,612 people have died in our streets during your terms, and now you want to take away their only source of shelter. Each of you, regardless of your intentions, have voted to criminalize poverty and homelessness with this decision, and for that, you should all be ashamed of yourselves.
Next speaker, please identify yourself.
I just wanted to follow that up by saying that this City Council has a pattern when it comes to homelessness. You say all the right things, you make all the right promises, and you have not followed through. And if this council thinks that the voters of this city are going to just stand by while people die on our streets, then you're wrong.
Next speaker, and if I can get Elliot Ezra and Jose Martinez. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers, my name is Elliot Avila, and I'm actually one of Mike Bonnent's constituents. I'm disappointed that this body has decided to impose more penalties against our unhoused population through Municipal Code 8502, and instead of addressing the mental health, sanitation, and the housing problems that we have in Los Angeles, we've decided to oppress those in our communities that are the most vulnerable. This is completely unacceptable. Mr. President, you actually came to speak at one of my club's meetings. I got to meet you, you're a great person, I know that all of you have the best intentions. I myself am a student, I was homeless myself, I slept in my car for two years while I was going to school, it was the only way I was able to get through it, and if this measure was present during that time, I would have myself been susceptible to these fines. We live in an era of progressive politics, and we expect better from our elected officials, I expect better from all of you. I hope y'all will listen to us, please.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, please identify yourself.
Ezra Sheldon. First off, thanks for having me. Here in solidarity with my fellow Santa Monica College students, I really believe, like, putting it out of sight isn't putting it out of mind. Y'all can do a lot better than this, and I would appreciate if you just put a little bit more effort into it. Thank you.
No, thank you. So if I can get Don Garza, Claudio Bouvel, Lauren Natoli-Hanna-Yi, please come up, Cassandra Mares, Aldalina Mendez, Maria Marquez, come on up, just come and identify yourself. Yes, sir, you're up first, identify yourself.
I don't know who's first, the ladies or...
No, you can go.
Oh, okay. First of all, Mr. Weston, I'm here to inform you that you praised Baldwin Hills Kaiser Clinic June 25th, but I want to let you know there's a liability regarding the seniors driving into the clinic and driving out the clinic. This letter would inform you of the people who are informed of their liability, and it's just a matter of time before one of the seniors get hurt on the Kaiser property, and it's gonna be a major lawsuit. So, Mr. Weston, I wanted to inform you that these people are aware of the situation, they continue to ignore the problem. I spoke to Kamani Black about this Monday, I believe, and he told me he's gonna look into it, but it's just a matter of time before one of the seniors get hurt, and my favorite word is "just" a matter of time. So can I leave this with you, Mr. Weston?
Yes, Sergeant, would you please get that? Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself. Yes.
Morning, councilmembers, my name is Hannah-Yi. I work with youth in Koreatown, and I'm here to ask Council President Weston to agendize the resolution to oppose SB 58, also known as the 4 a.m. bar bill. I am concerned about the harms this will bring to the youth in the community I work with. Koreatown has a lot of alcohol outlets, and the health impact will be massive if we allow alcohol sales until 4 a.m. This means people will possibly be drunk very early in the morning, which may result in DUIs while children are walking to school. The City Council has not taken an official stance on this bill that will drastically impact the lives of families and children in Los Angeles at the expense of private interests. Please engendize this resolution to protect our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Yes, please identify yourself.
Good morning, my name is Cassandra Maraz, and I'm a proud member of both the California Alcohol Policy Alliance, Kappa, and the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I'm here to ask you, Council President Weston, to agendize Council File 19-0002-S39, the resolution to oppose SB 58, the 4 a.m. bar bill. We are concerned that this bill will bring significant fiscal impact to the city's resources such as law enforcement, first responders, and the Department of Transportation. Currently, the City of L.A. is being listed as a supporter of the bill in Sacramento on the most recent geo-analysis, which I do have copies of, so there is no consideration for public health and safety aspects or cost nor research that justifies this type of legislation. As a public health and safety advocate, I urge you, Council President Weston, to agendize Councilmember Coretza's resolution to oppose SB 58 in order to protect the communities you were all elected to serve. Please think about the major consequences that SB 58 will cause, not only the families you represent, but as well as your own families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Hi, good morning, I'm Lauren Natoli from the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. The Los Angeles Times recently reported on the housing affordability crisis, and that it is stretching from our big coastal cities into the middle of the United States. The Times named Charleston, Las Vegas, and Louisville as being too expensive to allow entry-level buyers to obtain their first home. Developers are dumping money into luxury properties that young, senior, and low-income people cannot afford. Our current housing crisis is not unique to Los Angeles, and it will not simply disappear. We need low-cost, affordable housing now before the problem gets worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Muy buenos dias, senores. Buenos dias to all the presentes, mi nombre es Adelina.
What moment?
Adelina. Adelina.
Good morning, my name is Adelina.
Muy buenos dias a todos, este, mi nombre es Adelina, y vengo representando la comunidad de Koreatown.
As I said, my name is Adelina, I am here representing Koreatown.
Y en presentación de la comunidad, vengo a suplicarles por favor que no este, no autoricen lo del alcohol, que sea a las cuatro de la mañana.
And I'm here to urge you not to approve the sale of alcoholic beverages past 4:00 in the morning.
Porque perjudica mucho a toda la comunidad, este, en la familia, en la juventud, y de verdad es muy preocupante para la comunidad.
It's not good for anyone, it's not good for adults, it's not good for students, it's not good for anyone.
Sí, y este, y también hay muchas necesidades en la comunidad, pienso que también hay fondos en este, en ocuparlo porque sí, hay mucha, mucha este, necesidad en la comunidad. Gracias.
Instead of approving more licenses, I think that there were other things that we can do to improve the community. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
No, por favor. Mi nombre es Maria Márquez, yo vengo presentando a Pico, a Pico Junior.
My name is Maria Márquez, I am here representing Pico Union.
Esta organización de no mal licorerías.
So, this is my teacher.
No mal licorerías.
No mal licor, sorry.
Estoy aquí para pedirle al presidente del Consilio.
I am here to speak to the councilmembers.
Can you use her mic? We cannot hear you. Can you just kind of grab, your microphone is not.
It's not? Okay.
If we can...
Maybe now?
Yes.
Sorry.
Del Consilio, where, Wixson, algo así, Wixson? Que agenda el expediente del número 19-0002-S39?
I have a number here. It's called Wilson, I don't have my glasses on, but I think I can read, the number is
La, la resolución, la resolución para ponerse a la propuesta de la, de la CB 58.
This is in regards to the proposal for CB 58?
Que vendería alcohol hasta las cuatro, a las cuatro pm, a las cuatro am?
That would mean is that...
Tenemos preocupaciones de cómo está la propuesta. Traerla al impacto, a un impacto.
We are very concerned. I think that this would be a great impact to the community.
A un impacto.
But I think this would be a good financial boost for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
We need more police. We need more health services. We need more service for the community. We don't need this.
Thank you. Thank you. Her time has expired. Thank you. Okay, do we have... Did Isaac come forward? Isaac Hong? And Myra Jimenez? Marina Centron? Please come forward. Identify yourself. Is everybody all right?
Good morning, sir. My name's Isaac Hong, and I am currently living in Koreatown and also a member of the Coalition to Prevent Alcohol-Related Harms in L.A. Metro Area. I also came here for the Council President Weston, sir. You two agendized the resolution to oppose SB 58. There is no additional resources or consideration for the first responders and law enforcement. And also, we don't have enough conversation about, like, social costs, how they're gonna cover all the drunk driver, all the people who get into car accidents. So I want us to have more control in local level because I believe when there's a social cause or harms, like, state is not responsible. Like, city is responsible for the costs. So I really want us to have more local control. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And before the next speaker comes, let me just say to you that Mr. Coretts is all over this issue. And Paul, it's my understanding that we're gonna waive it out of committee and hopefully it'll be on the agenda next week. Is that your understanding? So it's my understanding that by next Tuesday or Wednesday, this council will be taking that issue up. So identify yourself and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Myra Jimenez, and I'm here with Alcohol Justice. I'm also here to ask you, Council President, and thank you for that updated information. But we really want to make sure that Council File 19-002-S39, Resolution to Oppose SB 58, is agendized. We are concerned that in Sacramento, the city of L.A. is being listed as a supportive city of this bill, when in fact, we do know that the City Council has not taken a stance on it. And we want to make sure that our council members have an opportunity to represent community and really have a discussion that is informed by information and data and statistics that we know the research supports, community concerns, and not the private interests of just extending alcohol sales at default. So we really want to make sure that you all have the information. Today, I want to submit for the record, it's the bill analysis for the most recent committee where it lists some of the fiscal impacts. It's Appropriations Committee Bill Analysis. But it still leaves out a lot of fiscal impacts that we know from the city of Los Angeles there will be on top of that. And then we also have some data that we want to share with you.
Thank you. But just, you know, keep an eye out. It should be on our agenda early next week. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name's Marina Centron again, and I'm here representing the West Side Impact Project. Thank you for that update. I did come to speak on the resolution. I just want to kind of drive home some points that Los Angeles is a beacon for social justice and protecting communities. So I would hope that the council does take in consideration this resolution and make a stance, speaking to Sacramento, letting them know that they can't use Los Angeles as some kind of guinea pig for their projects on, you know, the backs of our communities. I will look forward to hearing the vote on that resolution and the conversation that's happening around it. So thank you very much. And that's all.
Thank you. Hey, Don, did you come up? I thought I called you, Don Garza. Maybe I didn't. Come on. I am so sorry, man. I thought I had called you.
I was kind of upset at all of y'all, but I guess I just come in and say hello. But I do want to get the conversation started on one of the most important things that's going on and especially something that Mark Ridley Thomas has been pushing forward. And that is the right to shelter. The city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles has an opportunity here to craft a real right-to-shelter program that's not templated after the city of New York. No offense to the person that was here earlier. We have immediate needs. We have to get people off of the street while we wait for housing. Housing is not gonna miraculously happen overnight. We already know this. We have got to craft, and we can actually tailor these sprung structures in any way we want to to create a new form of shelter program. I encourage you and I urge you, please, make sure that this happens. You're doing a great job, but let's keep moving forward. Immediate needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Okay, so if we could get Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Spindler.
I'm coming, my nigga. Aren't you gonna welcome me back? Look, I'm back, my niggas. Here I am in L.A. Just back last night from 1:00 meeting in Pasadena with Terry Tornick and Mr. Kennedy. And Mr. Kennedy asked me a very relevant question. What can I do to help you with your services, nigga? And I says, "Mr. Kennedy, those fucking corrupted politicians from Los Angeles put me in this position, and now the niggas working in Pasadena to hustling for another opportunity under HHH, bitch, bitch, bitch." So I said to them, "That fucking cunt Pelosi and those jackasses from Sacramento don't know how to fuck with my money. They keep telling me to spend my SSI money on housing." And I say, "Fuck you, niggas. Fuck Ali and fuck Herman Jason Weston with those yellow teeth and his short little..."
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Spindler? Start his time.
You don't stop clock for me, nigga. How you do that? You son of a bitch.
Honorable nigga. Thank you for having me here today to talk about liquor. I support liquor for 4:00 AM sale. Very good. Why? Because the fucking Jew fucking go in car, drink lot of alcohol, run over nigga. Then nigga run over Jew. Now we get no more nigga, no more Jew. That only leave me and my fellow people from China. And we have all that money. We buy Jose Visa. Ha, 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 ha. Yes, we do. So again, I support you. Thank you, honorable nigga.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Was there... Did everybody that signed up get an opportunity? Come on down, dear. Hi. Who... Your name?
Hi, my name is Adeline Bertha. I'm a community organizer from Social Model. I'm here to ask that SB 58 resolution be put on the council agenda as you just announced. The bill proposes concerns in endangering people in California and bring a higher cost to law enforcement, emergency care services, and healthcare services throughout California. The facts I want to share today is that cities in 40-mile radius will bear the cost of DUI and violence and harm. Over 40 years of peer-reviewed public health research finds that two or more hours of increased alcohol sales does produce increases in alcohol consumption and related problems, including violence, emergency room emissions, injuries, and alcohol-impaired driving and motor vehicle crashes. Again, I ask that Council File 19-002-539 get agendized. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming down. So I think we got everybody. So that concludes general public comment. That brings us where? Madam Clerk.
Counselor. Motions for posting and referral?
They're posted and referred. Announcements, members? No announcements? Let's all rise for adjourning motions. Please rise for adjourning motions. I'm looking to my left side, Mr. Bloomingfield's side. I do not see any adjourning motions to my left. Mr. Root.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Kaye Connie Kang. The history books will remember Kang as the first Asian-American immigrant to work for a mainstream daily newspaper in the United States. But her story contains so much more than that. Connie was born into a Korea gripped by war. First, the World War, then the Korean War, which forced her family to flee her home in what is now North Korea. Connie's family fled to Seoul, then to Okinawa, Japan, where Connie attended an international school, developing a love for learning and for the English language. In 1975, Connie's family, like many families, like my family and so many other Korean families at the time, came to California. Connie studied journalism at the University of Missouri and Northwestern University before becoming a reporter in San Francisco. Connie knew that her story as a young Korean-American immigrant was a story shared by millions and that, if given the chance, her unique voice was the right one to speak for the voiceless. Connie got that chance in the spring of 1992, when the riots broke out in our city. Our paper of record, the Los Angeles Times, had no Korean-speaking reporters. The Korean-American Journalists Association implored the Times to hire someone that could tell their story, that could understand their communities and could help build bridges in a time with so many fractures. Connie Kang became that person. In her two and a half decades of reporting with the Los Angeles Times, Connie was thorough, thoughtful, and deeply respectful of her sources. She helped connect Koreatown to greater Los Angeles, helped recognize the contributions and value of Korean-Americans, and helped tell the Korean-American story to a wider audience. Throughout it all, she kept running a column in the Koreatown Weekly, connecting her community with the broader world. There were so many heroes